Welcome, everybody. My name is Vanessa Williams. I am the chairperson of the Cannabis Control Board. I'm calling this public hearing to order this November 19th, 2020. We are conducting this physically from Nurse Large Conference Room in Atalou. Tonight is the first in a series of three scheduled public hearings on rules proposed by the Cannabis Control Board pursuant to Section 8110 of the Guam Cannabis Industry Act. In light of the current COVID-related restrictions, we're also broadcasting and encouraging participation via Zoom. And these hearings will continue in the large conference room and via Zoom today, tonight until 7:00 PM. Also tomorrow, November 20th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM as well. And Saturday, November 21st, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Board members present today in the conference room are Chief Steven Ignatio, the Chief of Police. Thank you for being our member present today, Chief. We also have our members of the board present via Zoom. Vice Chair Daphne Shimizu, Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Secretary Ursula Herrera. Adrian Cruz, Deputy Director of the Department of Agriculture. Niko Fujikawa, Representative of the Guam Visitors Bureau. Zita Pangolinen, Representative of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And Teresa Ariola, Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Thank you, board members, for setting aside the time for tonight and in advance for your participation in the public hearings the next two nights. Thank you all who are present today and welcome. Thank you for coming to participate and give us feedback on these proposed rules. I also want to thank, while we're here, quickly, our staff, Cray Camacho, Gerard Affigui, and the entire team at the Department of Revenue and Taxation for providing the much-needed administrative support for this board. Since it's in session in April 2019 throughout the pandemic, and tonight, we really appreciate it and making this happen in light of the restrictions. Copies of the proposed rules were available and still available on file. Fiscal copies at the Department of Agriculture Director's Office in Minilo, together with the preliminary cost impact assessment of the proposed rules. Copies of these proposed rules and the preliminary cost impact assessment are also provided on the Department of Revenue and Taxation's website. For those who want to view that, continue to be provided there at the HTTPS: colon forward slash forward slash www.guamtax.com forward slash CCB slash index dot HTML. Those have been provided online, continue to do so in order to maximize the opportunity for members of the public to examine those proposed rules, especially in light of the COVID-related restrictions. So tonight, the purpose of these public hearings is to afford any interested party, or if they are an entity or organization, their authorized representative, an opportunity to present facts, argument, or submit written data or views for consideration in the formulation of the proposed rules as they are presented. To that end, we also have accepted and will continue to accept written testimony through Saturday, November 21st, 5:00 PM, at the close of our final public hearing. You can submit it via email at guamccb@revtax.guam.gov. You can also find this information at the Cannabis Control Board's link at the Department of Revenue and Tax link that I cited earlier. To facilitate your testimony tonight, we'll call on those who have signed up to testify to provide their written comments. To that end, for those of you who are on Zoom, we'd ask that you go ahead and identify if you are providing oral testimony tonight to go ahead and put that in the chat box, so we can sign you up and give you an allotted time slot. We already have one of those slots filled. And we will call on you in the order that they are filled or assigned, first come, first served. When you're called, please state your full name for the record. Please be sure to have your camera on and identify the organization or entity that you represent, if you are representing a business or entity. And just, we ask in consideration of all those who are present tonight, and in fairness to their time, that you try to present your oral testimony within 15 minutes. Keeping in mind that we will continue the hearings tomorrow and Saturday if we're not able to get everyone. And also keeping in mind that you can also supplement your oral testimony through written testimony by emailing it to us at the address provided earlier. And we can provide that in the chat box as well. So, without further ado, I would like to go ahead and, we're at 5:42, so we have one scheduled for 6:00. And I see Devin Suzuki would like to give oral testimony, representing Atmosphere Cannabis Collective. And Devin, we can go ahead and have you testify first. If you'll go ahead and turn off your camera, turn on your mic, and you will have the floor for 15 minutes.
Hi, everyone. Is this working? Can everyone hear me? Okay, so I have the laws here. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say, I actually really like everything, the culmination of the laws put together. I think it was very creative. I won't use all the 15 minutes, but I just wanted to say that I like the idea of, through experience in Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance, we had a little bit more control of our product because we had retail, we also had manufacturing, and then we had cultivation. And we were a full veteran cannabis company. And so we were able to essentially research the cannabis in California, get it veteran-approved with a VA, and then source it to our retail. And it was a proprietary, you know, process. And then that's something that I'm trying to bring here with Atmosphere Cannabis Collective. So just with me right now, it wouldn't be too big of a big deal if we couldn't per se have our names on multiple businesses, but at least for me and how I've practiced before in California, that's just how I'm used to it. But everything else, I really appreciate it. I like it. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suzuki, for providing your comments. Are you testifying from California today, or are you here in Guam?
Oh, no. I'm here on Guam. I moved back home in February. Yeah, I've been gone for 10 years. I've worked in legal cannabis in Hawaii and then California as well. I was a cultivator, sales and distribution. I've done packaging in a warehouse and then retail. I worked in the biggest retail in Southern California. And then I found out you guys made it legal, so I jumped back home.
Well, welcome home, Mr. Suzuki.
Thank you. I was in Gard in 2013, too. So it's been since then.
I just want to make sure I understand your comment. So you are, in a nutshell, it's that you would have preferred if we had a vertical operation, as in one company being able to do all three. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct, sir. And that's just because through experience, you know, we have proprietary, I personally have proprietary formulas for my cultivation. I have no problem passing the lab test. I've done it for years and I've, you know, very enthusiastically want to do that here with the cultivators that I've been developing as well. But I just, you know, it's going to be a hard one for me to choose where I want to be on that line. Am I going to want to, if I want to open retail and work with the veterans face-to-face, I can't grow it. I can't package it. I'm an art major myself. I plan to finish my degree at UOG. And all my art is, you know, has and is in California on many things. And, you know, for me, it's a hard one to try to find. And I know that locals here are trying to find where they're going to put themselves. And it's not a vertical integration in the sense, at least, you know, and I do understand there comes the monopoly sense to it. But, you know, like I told my mom and dad, this is something that I can do. This is a way that I can feed the table, you know. So yeah, I think, you know, if we can do all of it, you know, then we can control the quality of the cannabis. You know, we can control, you know, if we have a problem on the retail side, we can get a faster turnaround. And I also have experience working with the Bureau of Cannabis Control. So that's something that we've found pretty effective in the business sense. It's to just kind of, not to say not have to work with too many people, but with the new industry, it could be easier to tread it individually or with the team that you more so trust, one company.
Well, thank you, Mr. Suzuki, for your comment.
Thank you, guys. Yes, thank you.
But did any other members of the board have questions or comments for Mr. Suzuki? I thought I saw a couple. No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Suzuki, and best of luck.
Thank you so much, guys.
Now, I see we have someone, I just want to remind those who are present. If you are planning on giving oral testimony, please sign up by identifying yourself in the chat. And we will go ahead and put you in the slot, because I see a lot of people. Well, I see at least 20-some participants here. So we want to make sure we get to you in an orderly manner. Absent someone signing up now, we'll go ahead and move to Pacific Roots LLC. If they're present, we can go ahead and have you present your oral testimony.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
Hi.
Hi.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Dorisso.
I'm David.
And I'm Ray Mart.
And we are Pacific Roots LLC.
Can we get your full names for the records, please?
Dorisso Cruz.
Your full.
Which one?
Your names, your full names, your individual names.
Dorisso Cruz.
Okay.
David Cruz.
And this is Ray Mart Manaus.
Thank you.
And we represent Pacific Roots LLC. Hello and good evening. We would like to begin by commending Senator Clinton Mujell for establishing a framework for the creation of the cannabis industry. We would like to commend the Guam 35th Legislature for taking the time to review and input rules and regulations to ensure the safety of the community and the benefits it could use to strengthen the various government agencies. The tax benefits obtained by the cannabis industry can strengthen various government agencies by providing more personal personnel and better services leading to the community towards economic growth and stability. We would like to commend Governor Lou Leon Guerrero, Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio, and the administration for their support in Guam's growing agriculture and aquaculture industry. With the overwhelming support the government can give the community, we can proudly say that we are confident that our agriculture and aquaculture industry will thrive by opening opportunities to the people of Guam. And we would like to commend the Cannabis Control Board for working diligently with limited resources on these rules and regulations to ensure the rules are fair towards the community, farmers, product manufacturers, and dispensaries. The community has confidence that the Cannabis Control Board upholds the true meaning of a free enterprise system that our founding fathers mentioned in the Constitution that America and Guam were built on. That triggered the greatest explosion of economic progress in all history. And they will continue.
Pacific Roots LLC is a group of farmers and concerned citizens that feel there's a portion of the law that is of concern. As we interpret a free enterprise system into our legal recreational cannabis industry, it is crucial to understand the balance between a successful legal cannabis industry and the illicit black market. The economic effects it could have if the proposed rules and regulations does not allow a single entity the right to own a full integration of all business licenses, cultivation, manufacturing, and retail. In the proposed rules and regulation, page 27, line 14, section B, says, "Responsible officials, board members, business stakeholders, principals, or entities of a cannabis cultivation facility, a cannabis product manufacturing facility, or a retail cannabis store can only own or have financial interest in one cultivation, one product manufacturing facility, or one retail store at a given time, so long as the provisions for the application of the separate cultivation facility, product manufacturing facility, or retail cannabis store licenses are completed and fulfilled by the applicant." The term "or" dictates a choice an applicant has, either own a cultivation and a manufacturing facility, or just a retail store. The legal term "or" will force businesses to drive up prices in order to profit. It will allow the illicit black market to underprice their products and flourish. Guam's recreational cannabis will fail by not being able to get a full tax benefit. It will burden our judicial and justice system, provide unsafe outlets for consumers to purchase cannabis, allow untested products to get into the community's hands. According to the Center of Disease Control, CDC, as of February 18, 2020, vape cartridges containing vitamin E acetate has 2,807 hospitalized for evaluation or deaths. We don't want to go down that path. The term "or" leaves farmers and manufacturing facilities uncertain and gives the power to a dispensary to carry a product of an exclusive cultivator or manufacturer that would leave the remaining cultivators and manufacturers unable to sell their products, thus leading to bankruptcy. It also does not give an option for a dispensary to own a farm or manufacturing facility in the case a farmer or producer chooses to upcharge. In the end, the consumer will be forced to purchase product from the illicit black market to get a cheaper product. We believe it would give each business an equal opportunity to engage and thrive in each aspect in this growing market. It creates fairness for a cultivation, manufacturing, and retail dispensary. It does not hinder any part of the business from selling their products, but opens an opportunity for equality. By amending the "or" to "and/or", you will allow cultivation, manufacturing, and retail dispensaries to engage in a full enterprise market benefiting the community by providing the lowest prices to consumers, a depreciated illicit market, economic opportunities, and fairness to farmers, manufacturing facilities, and dispensaries leading to a successful cannabis industry.
And to add on to that, we actually have a couple of numbers that we'd like to share with you guys based off of the illicit black market. And we actually got some of our numbers from local growers. Under a single household, possibly, they have a four harvest per year at a three-months growth. And per harvest, you could produce about four pounds. Now, the market value right now for, in the illicit market is one ounce of flour could be at $4.50, and one pound could be at $7,200. And then 16 pounds for the whole year could add up to 115,200. Also, we have some GRT calculations to add on to that. So the income per harvest at three months, the black market can make about 28,800. The income per month could be at 9,600. And then per year is at 115,200. Now, you would be looking at a loss of a 5% GRT per year, and that's going to cost at 5,760. So imagine that being lost out from taxes. And then also from looking at business expenses for that. The breakdown, possible power could be at 1,200. Water could be at $400, and possible rent for those who are renting at 1,500 to $2,000 a month. And gross supplies at 1,100.
Okay, so what we did is we took the total business expenses and we subtracted it with your gross income per year. And then we subtracted it by the GRTs, which is 5,760, which gave us 59,040. Now, if you're in the 40,000 to 80,000 bracket, usually income taxes at 22%. So out of 59,040, 22% would be 12,988 dollars and 80 cents with a grand total of 5% GRT plus 22% income tax would give us 18,748, 80 per household. Now, at 50 households, doing it at a black market level, Guam would lose 937,400 off of 5% GRT and the 22% income tax. And I guess gross income can go based on, this is the least projected. Now, they could even grow more. They can grow 20 pounds. They can grow 30 pounds on a single household. So in the end of the day, you have to think of it like cannabis is not like gas, or it's not like a metal industry. It's an industry that anybody can cultivate. So the market is really big, black market and legal. So in order to depreciate the black market, the value of the legal market has to be at its lowest, or else, for example, legal industry charges 450. Black market will always charge $200 an ounce. So it's always a give and take for the industry. So you have to really, really, by changing the term "or" to "and", you give the consumers the best prices possible. And they can go to the outlets and consume a safe, tested product. So it leaves out a lot of problems down the line. So thank you so much.
And if you would like to see some of our calculations, we actually sent it to the email.
Yeah, we sent it to Adrian, right? That we sent it to? Craig, I believe.
Thank you. Yes, I believe we did get a copy of that. And I just, for everybody's sake, again, I just want to, you know, kind of condense it down into a kernel. So if I understand you correctly, you're advocating for an integrated business. I know you had mentioned that it was for a diversity of a market. And you had mentioned that, you know, a buyer might only get from a particular farmer or a particular manufacturer. But in my mind, the integrated would be the same, right? You would only obviously sell your own. And I just want to be clear.
In some states, they do a 70-30 law. So what it is, is that 70% of the cultivator's own products can be sold in the store, and the 30% has to be outsourced. But also, I like to comment on Suzuki's own. It's not really a monopoly, because 10,000 square feet, I love how you guys capped it at 10,000 square feet, because now it's not flushed with commercial product. Instead, it's grown with quality. And so the game here isn't how much you can produce, it's the quality that you can provide.
Okay, so you're advocating, or you would like us to consider a 70-30 if we were to allow?
Integration.
Yeah, yeah. If you guys feel that it's going to be a monopoly, then what it does is it provides fairness for the grower, the manufacturing, and the dispensary, because IRS 280E is not a simple thing. So these dispensaries don't get any write-offs. But the only people that usually get write-offs are the growers and not even the manufacturers to a certain extent, but packaging department doesn't get a write-off, only cost of goods sold. So in order to even, like, for example, a cultivator, you cannot just file your own, your administration expenses. You can only, you have to separate the grow from the administration side.
And that's the only way.
Then, now you can file it because you show that it came strictly from cultivating the product that's being sold.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. And for Pacific Roots, could you actually go? I didn't actually see your written testimony or submission yet. But would you go ahead and type your names in the chat or send it to the compliance branch for the record, too? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last name of the non-Cruz testifying. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Did any other members have questions for the members of Pacific Roots? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I don't see anyone else signed up in the chat to present oral testimony yet. So if you just joined us, we are taking oral testimony, presentation of oral testimony. First, whoever signs up first, if you've joined us and you're prepared to testify, go ahead and unmute your mic and identify yourself for the record, and we can hear you now.
Madam Chair, may I ask if, you know, there may be people who don't want to do oral testimony. If we can have probably a show of hands or maybe right in the chat. I know that some already has indicated if they're going to be submitting written testimony. There's always, of course, that's always a preference. Some people don't really like to talk in front of an audience. And so I'm just, it sounds like there are no other oral testimonies, but it'd be nice to know, because there is a big, pretty big participation, 41 folks in this meeting. So it'd be nice to know if, who else will be submitting testimony. I know a few people have. And you could just write that on the chat.
I'm sorry. But also, would it be nice if you guys can add also a business license segment for seed cultivation? Because that's a huge market in the States. And cultivators usually sell 10 to 12 seeds for like 150 to 300 dollars. So, you know, it would really create another market and another business license to the program.
Is that in your, did you add that to your testimony?
No, no. It's just, you guys are looking for a seed source. So the only way to provide a seed source is to create a business license that would be creating seeds for these businesses.
I believe the, I believe the grower, the grower has the ability to propagate and to retail his seeds. You know, as a grower, he's selling the raw product, and it would be up to, you know, another company to buy the seeds if that's what they want, if that's what they want to buy from the grower as opposed to the flower or something like that. The farmer's just selling the product, right? Whatever it is that that farmer is growing, I understand that for the market, obviously, a plant with seeds is not desirable. And so, but if a person wanted to grow that to sell the seeds, it would be, it would be the same.
Okay.
So you can already, you can already sell your agricultural product like to another farmer, or if a manufacturer wants to do that, then that's their business.
Okay, so if you're selling your seeds as a farmer, then your seeds would end up on a retail shelf and have its own shelf for like seed selection?
No, you could, as a farmer, I mean, you could sell to another licensed farmer, right? Because sometimes there are farmers that will, you know, want diversity in their fields. And so, you know, like, if I have one kind of mango, I might sell to another farmer another kind of mango, another strain, right? As long as the people that you're selling to also are legal cultivators. Because of course, we monitor each and every plant. So we're going to know if you gave that seed, you know, to somebody else. You'd have to sell it to another, another legal farmer. You can't just sell it to anybody.
Only because it doesn't say anything in the rules and regs, anything about seeds.
So I think, I think the, I'm seeing some chat going on. If we're having to explain, and I think, I think everybody would agree that, making it clearer, that what you would like to see. Making it clearer, is that? Is that the recommendation would be to make that clearer? Because clearly, it's not as clear in the regulation if we're having to explain.
It was still a question.
Yeah, because it doesn't say anything about seeds. So you can sell it on a retail shelf and the consumers can buy it. That's. That's, that's just from what a, a farmer would do too, you know? Like people want to grow their own and they're legally allowed to cultivate six plants. So I'm assuming that as a cultivator, are we allowed to produce seeds and sell it at a retail level? So consumers can grow that diversity of marijuana?
There is that, there is a law, sorry, this is Devin. Uh, there, it, so the way it would work, guys at Pacific Roots is, uh, according to the way that we mirrored it for California is you would then not be able to, or actually the law does allow us here on Guam as the cultivator to brand your own seeds. But they would just have to go through a manufacturer first. Because they're the ones with the power to somewhat give it to that realtor, uh, the, to the, uh, retail. So you guys can't, just as the cultivators give it to retail directly? Because then in the sense, you're not the one physically packaging it. But the seeds themselves with the metric system will go through, uh, manufacturing. Then from manufacturing will go to retail. And then you'll be able to have like complete input on the branding. It would just have to go somewhere else to get packaged. And then whoever you choose for your warehouse, for your, for your manufacturing is going to be responsible for selling it to the good retails. So they did, uh, put it in the law though, and it's, it's allowed. And then we'll be able to do nursery too. I see what you mean though, guys. Good point, good point.
I think that if there's anyone participating in the hearing today or who signed up, and I believe you have the function to message them privately in the chat, um, if you guys want to sidebar. Um, but let's, uh, keep it to the person testifying for now and the members of the board and their questions so that we can facilitate, spell, timely facilitate everyone's testimony. And please don't forget, you also can submit your additional comments. If in observing this hearing, um, you have responses or something comes to you and, and hearing other people's testimony, submit those comments to GuamCCB@revtax.guam.gov until 5:00 PM on November, Saturday, November 21st. Um, if there are no other questions or comments from the members for Pacific Roots, I see Andrea Pellicani has asked to, um, present testimony. So I can go ahead and move on to her and shout the four.
Hi, Hafidah. Really didn't mean to testify today. I plan to testify on Saturday in full. Uh, my name is Andrea Pellicani and I'm from Grassroots. Um, and we've been actively engaged in the discussion about cannabis policy for years here on Guam. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Pacific Roots. I'm sorry, Mr. Suzuki's testimony, but I wanted to reiterate, uh, an important part of what they said, which was the ability for cannabis businesses to be able to integrate. I don't think they should be forced to vertically integrate, but they should be given the option. In other words, you can apply for one of each license. And I know this was sort of a contested, uh, discussion at one of the board meetings. Um, and the idea was that, um, uh, I, I think there was some idea that maybe you guys would consider vertically, vertical expansion, I mean, yeah, I'm sorry, horizontal expansion. And I think that would be the mistake. Um, I suggested, uh, for medical, the 10,000 tier. And the idea of the 10,000 tier, and I know that to many people, it seems like a big canopy, but it really is not. And the reason why it's a 10,000 tier is it prevents, um, any one business taking too much of the pie. And so it basically allows people to have, um, a 10,000 is, you know, it takes a bit of an investment. It's, it's going to take a lot of expertise because it's not just a small farm. Um, it's full-scale commercial cultivation. Um, and you do need a lot of expertise to run that consistent, consistently. Um, but the, the, the size, I just wanted to reiterate that the size is small. Uh, and I know I've discussed about my concern about the 500 square foot option. Uh, that I don't think there should be a special license for that. If the impediment, um, or the barrier for entry for the small farmers is the fee, then, then adjust the, the tier, the lowest tier fee. Uh, and allow them to grow within their license rather than to create a special micro license at what, I mean, it's, you know, it's not. It, and my concern about that is already the math is not feasible. And it's, to me, it's, it's potentially misleading, uh, people who want to, uh, have a 500 square foot facility, um, that they're going to be successful, right? And if you have all these regulatory requirements, then the next step is opening the door for exemption. And that's the one thing that I've been concerned about for a while now. Now, I, I know I've discussed it, um, at meetings and I've discussed it with board members. Um, and so that's been my concern. So, I, I mean, if you want to, I mean, if, if you're, the lowest tier is up to 2,500 square feet. There's nothing preventing a person from starting at 500 square, square feet, something that they could manage. Uh, but the problem is, I know it's not financially feasible, it's just not feasible. It's not going to make any money, it's not going to survive under the regulatory burdens that are being placed on them. And I don't just mean, um, compliance from public health, compliance from agriculture, compliance from the cannabis board, but also, uh, tax and, and financial compliance that they're going to have to. I mean, you know, you could end up getting audited every year, you're going to need legal issues. You know, you may need to generate money for, you know, you need, you need a legal fund. Because this is, again, federally, still federally illegal. And so there, there are a lot of legal challenges that come along with it as well as a lot of tax challenges, a lot of accounting challenges. Uh, and, and the one thing that I want to do is ensure that every cannabis business has the tools to survive. Uh, because it's very, it's a very challenging atmosphere. They're not setting up a 500 square foot, uh, thing to grow tomatoes. It's completely different thing. And I know that already in itself has its own regulatory hurdles. Um, and so that's just all, I, I wanted to support, um, what, um, the previous group was testifying to about the option to vertically integrate, give people the option to grow. They want to start out as a retailer and they want to expand into, I don't know, manufacturing. And they, you know, let them, uh, they should be allowed to apply for those licenses there. It, it's going to be difficult as it is, but it allows people the option to keep their stores, um, filled, to keep products on the shelves despite volatility in the market. Um, and if I can just, uh, give you a, a sort of case study. Uh, if you look at some of the earlier markets that went, um, that opened for adult use, and I'll give you a good examples in Colorado, they required vertical integration. And what was happening, oh, I'm sorry, they didn't have vertical integration. I might be getting this backwards, but, uh, so what was happening is what, uh, the farmers, uh, ruined crop. There wasn't enough crop to go around. And what was happening was the dispensaries were, um, barely staying alive because they couldn't fill their own shelves to sell stuff. And so that's, uh, especially when there's going to be so much volatility in the market. Um, I just think every cannabis business should have the option, um, to be able to fill their own shelves, whether they want to or not, you know, it's up to them if it fits their business model. If they want to specialize in one thing at their farm and then their store can, would have to obviously diversify. Um, they wouldn't be able to provide an entire market, but they could specialize in one type of product, whether it be a specific strain to grow or a specific edible that they want to make, um, that allow them to keep their shelf full. But it also doesn't, it, I think it makes the, uh, the market more robust. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them and thank them for, for their testimony. And I, I have no idea who, who they are and I look forward to meeting them, but, um, I agree with them a lot. Thanks, Vanessa.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, that's good to hear. And thank you, Pacific Roots and Devin Suzuki. We're hearing a lot of, um, good feedback from you guys. Uh, can I ask the members that have specific questions? Um, for, or maybe follow-up for, um, Pacific Roots and Mr. Suzuki as well, touching on the same topics. Adrian, go ahead.
Hi Andrea. Um, um, again, just to be curi-, uh, just to be concise, did you offer a, a thought on, on the size regulation?
I did. Actually, I, I suggested the 10,000 square foot, um, canopy size for medical. And that tier, the, the way the tiers are set up, we suggested and recommended those sizes when we were building the medical program. So, um,
So it's, it's nothing new, it's nothing outside of the rules? You, you don't have a, a new proposal?
No, I don't. Uh, I, I, I think, uh, especially with the, with the board, uh, being the regulatory board, you guys can revisit the market as frequently as quarterly to say, okay, maybe we should have opened up licensing, right? Like maybe you can have two farms or maybe you can have, you know, two dispensaries. That, that'd be completely up to you. I think the way you guys have it now, uh, it gives people an opportunity to get their foot in the door, uh, to open up the market. And then you guys are going to sort of have to be the ones to monitor what the supply and demand is, is going, uh, and that, what that's going to look like for the next five years to be able to tailor or amend regulations and, and to sort of help the, the industry along to, to not oversupply or not undersupply.
Okay. Thanks for your comment, Andrea.
Thank you too, Adrian.
Any other members have questions? Actually, I have a, a follow-up question, Andrea. Um, going back to the concern with the, um, 500 square foot license. Um, and I, I heard that it's too small. Um, but can you clarify, what is the concern that the price for the license is too low? Or that, that no one will actually apply for this license?
No, my concern is that it's not a successful license. It's not financially feasible. It, it, they're not going to make it at 500 square feet, um, of canopy. You know, e- especially, it's too small to be successful financially, is what I'm saying. So I, I recommend removing the license, um, completely. Because the next option would be to sort of that tier license to ask for regulatory exemption. That's what I fear. I don't want anybody who's got a cannabis license or license to grow, uh, to be exempted. And I know this board isn't, isn't in support of granting it, but you guys may not be there, you know, two years from now. And, and, and my concern is it just opens that door. And according to, to discussions that I've had with, um, some of the members of the board in the past, the concern is that, um, the, it's a, the barrier was the fee, right? To get into the, the lowest tier license, it was too expensive, uh, for people to get that. So if the barrier is the fee, I just recommend, don't create a new license, just lower the fee for the, for the tier one license or the lowest license. If that's the barrier, that'll allow, uh, like, like I said, there's nothing prohibiting them from starting at 500 square feet. But when they come, uh, when they come to know their business and how much their costs are, what their cost per pound is, um, and what they need to do to comply, including legal, um, accounting, tax-wise, and they realize how much money they need to generate, it allows them to grow within their license. You know, and simply just expand their canopy in, in an existing facility. Um, and, and, and I already know, it's just mathematically not successful. 500 square feet is just too small, uh, for anybody to survive. So if, if, again, if the concern is that the fees are too high for these people that want an entry-level license, then lower the 2,500 square foot fee. That's, to me, that just sounds like, um, a, a more feasible solution than to sort of create that opportunity for some board, not you guys. Because I, again, I know you guys are not keen to regulatory exemption, but some other board down the line might be keen to it. And, and that's what I fear. I, I just don't want any, um, you know, anybody to somehow end up bypassing lab tests or, you know, not to have, uh, to have the same kind of, you know, equipment that everybody else is required to have to meet quality control or to meet specification as, as is being required by the regulatory board. And I just already know, 500 square feet is just not financially or it, it's not feasible.
Thank you, thank you. That really does clarify. Um, is there a, a comment on, on the, I mean, just, do you, what you've mentioned, if the concern is about the barriers to entry, then perhaps reduce the cost of the type one? Is it type one, the lowest size fee? What is our suggestion for what that, um, license fee would be?
Um, you know, that's, I, I could think that's going to be, take a, take a study. I mean, that would be up to you guys because essentially that would be your regulatory fund, right? Um, and, and, yeah, I, I don't have any recommendation on what that would be. It would be up to you guys to decide what sort of budget you need to work with and how you're going to generate and to be up that money. So, um, I don't have a recommendation. I'm just simply saying, if, if that's the concern, then, then we should address the concern, which is the fee.
Thanks. Okay, thank you, Andrea. I really appreciate that.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other members have follow-up questions after that? Okay, um, so just if there was anyone, uh, who wants to present or who's just joined us or has changed their mind and wants to present oral testimony tonight, we have about the 40 more minutes before the close of tonight's public hearing. Um, so please just go ahead and either identify yourself in the chat or turn off your mic and announce yourself, state your name for the record. And we'd love to hear your testimony.
Hafidah?
Hafidah, yes, Obama?
My name is, yeah, yeah, hi, how are you doing? I have a question, um, uh, in one of the, in the cultivation, uh, section, you have, uh, it prohibiting the use of synthetic fertilizers. Is there a reason why?
Hi, Jesse.
Hey, what is?
Yes, um, for a number of reasons. One is the environmental impact, um, that it will have, especially because we're allowing ground cultivation. The amount of, of a particular fertilizer and its runoff effects is, is a very real. I mean, we're, we're having that kind of problem with, uh, sometimes regular farmers and the things that they use, especially if they're, uh, on hilly areas and, and the water runs off to another farmer's property. But another issue that that's going to be is the quality of the product. Uh, because if we allow certain synthetics and you mix certain things together, um, you could get some toxic compounds which would affect the, the quality of the plant and the health and safety of the consumer. And the third is, uh, the real environmental impact of the, all the bottles and, and, and the packaging and all the things that are going to end up being shipped to Guam. Of course, you know, we, we have a big enough problem as it is with, um, you know, pollution. And, and so that, that was the third concern. And the fourth beneficial part of that would be that it would help foster more businesses, uh, local businesses to grow the, or to manufacture, uh, the products that are needed, um, for, for this new industry.
I, you know, right, right now, I, I work in, at, at, uh, I'm, I'm testifying as a, on, as myself. I work at University of Guam and I, I specialize in crop production. I work with the biggest pharmaceutical, the biggest commercial farmers. And, and, and you know, to me, um, I, I heard of a, of a, a law regulating how a farmer or someone should fertilize their plant. I, that, I think the real problem you're going to have is, is not fertilizer, it's pesticide use. Pesticide residue, it's not fertilizers. The same amount of bottles that you, that you get for, or for, uh, synthetic fertilizers are going to be the same amount you get for non-synthetic fertilizers. And when it comes to, you know, the, the, uh, possibility of, of groundwater or, uh, any kind of pollution that happens in, through fertilizers, um, you know, that's a possibility throughout the island right now. You know, I'd say if, if, right, if, if you guys have eaten any local vegetable here on Guam, you've eaten a product that, that's been grown by a synthetic fertilizer, I guarantee it. Unless you're just eating taro, banana, or coconut. You know, most of the, most of the products that come from our farmers are, come from farmers who use synthetic fertilizers at a, at a minimum rate. The, the way I think about it is, is the, the more, if, if, if the person is, is not practicing good practices when it comes to synthetic fertilizers, losing money, just like any farmer. That they, they, a, a, a normal farmer, in order to, to, to fertilize an acre of, of land, he's going to spend about $2,000. They, a normal farmer, in order to fertilize an acre of land, he's going to spend about $2,000. And I wouldn't want, and I guarantee you, he does not want to waste that fertilizer. You know, now it's a possibility. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but the, if you use any type of, and this is not just synthetic fertilizers, non-synthetic fertilizer, any fertilizer you use, if you use it wrong, you will screw up something. It doesn't matter what it is. So I, you know, I think unless someone can, unless there's you know, I come from the field of science and I usually, you know, a lot of what I look at is is through studies, journal articles. If you can show me a journal article that, that, you know, suggests that synthetic fertilizers are not good for cannabis growth, I love to see it. I love to read it and maybe, and think about what the journal says, the journal article says, and the possibility of the problems.
Thanks Jesse for your comment.
Thank you Mr. Bamba. Director Ariel, I believe, I saw your hand. Did you have a question or comment for Mr. Bamba?
Yes, I did. So Jesse, are you, so just to be clear, you're recommending or you're suggesting that we rethink the 100% organic fertilizer and to allow reasonable best practice use of synthetic fertilizer, but you also indicate that it's the pesticide that we should be concerned about and not really the fertilizer. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, like I said, across the nation and, you know, most of the problems that they're seeing with cannabis growth is not synthetic fertilizers, it's pesticide residue.
And we also require naturally derived pesticides as well. We don't allow synthetic pesticides as well.
Yeah. So the problem with that is nothing, nothing is, in EPA is, you, there's nothing that EPA has approved as a pesticide for this crop. That's actually against the law. Anytime you use a pesticide on a crop, it has to be approved by EPA.
People do it all the time.
I know, I know, I understand and it's a very touchy subject, but I tell you, you know, most of the farmers I deal with, and these are, these are regular commercial farmers, you know, they don't want to kill their customers. That's the last thing they wanted. But there are things that happen where they don't read the label correctly. They may be off by, you know, they may spray a fungicide on a plant that's not registered, you know, then they get in trouble for that. But I can tell you this, most of the greenhouse production that happens in the States and throughout the world, you know, pesticide residue and pesticide application is your biggest threat.
Thank you. Appreciate that Mr. Bamba. And so you're testifying in your personal capacity today, correct? Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Bamba from the board? Okay, before moving on to the next participant, I just want to welcome board member William Parkinson. Thank you for joining us Will. He's also present, so I believe that's all members of our board today. And I also wanted to apologize, I mistakenly said our hearing was going until 7:00 PM tonight, and it's actually 7:30. So my apologies, we still have an hour. So opportunity to get hopefully quite a few more people in. So we also, we have Josh Camacho, owner of 671 Growth Supply. In the chat said he would like to present some testimony tonight. Mr. Camacho, if you can turn on your mic and your camera. And your floor is yours.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening. I'd like to testify kind of in relation to what the last guy was talking about. We own a growth supply company and in the States, you have an industry that's been created not only to supply cannabis to users, but to grow it. Now, when you say 100% organic, it's very misleading because a lot of companies nowadays advertise their products as organic even though they're synthetically made. Now you can have plant-derived organics in a powder form that's basically synthetically made, but you know, it's pretty much an organic makeup. So how do you classify what we're allowed to sell? Businesses that are already on operation, supplying the home growers, supplying the local farmers. How are you going to regulate what a business can sell? Is that legal? I mean, as far as like, you know, free business practice. I mean, here's a couple products I have here at the house, okay? This, this product here is called the Type 420. Now, if you can listen, it's a salt-based powdered nutrient. Now, they have a feature, this, this product is developed strictly for cannabis in half. It's used in outdoor greenhouse facilities in the States. It's used in indoor greenhouse facilities in the States. There's been no problems with us bringing these products to the island as far as customs and EPA and agriculture, you know, those we haven't had any red flags because all this stuff has, you know, SDS sheets attached to it. It has basically like a backing from being a reputable company in the industry. As far as pesticides, I mean, this is what we sell. Now, this is a brand called Lasco's Plant Therapy. I can read you the ingredients here. It's soybean oil, peppermint oil, citric acid, okay? There's water, soap, isopropyl alcohol, and sodium citrate in here. There's nothing in this pesticide that is harmful to the environment or to the user. Okay, you can use this all the way up to your last week of harvest, before harvest, without having any effects on the plant. Now, they make substances like this and you're telling us basically in the regulations that we can no longer sell these products if they're not 100% OMRI organic certified. But you have all these companies in the States that are passing, you know, the most rigorous testing in their testing facilities and they're using these products. So my question is, is how can you exclude the entire industry that's been formed to comply to regulations? Which Guam's regulations are being based off of, in my understanding, to say that they're not allowed here. And this is another popular brand that we sell here in Guam. It's called Athena. This is a full synthetic line. You know, it's not, it's not plant juices or animal juices mixed into a bottle. This is made in a factory. So technically, it's synthetic. Now, you're going to tell producers that they can't use this product when it's advertised as one of the best products to use in commercial agriculture for cannabis. So I guess my question is, is how can we alter this? Or how can we look at it a different way to allow the grower to, like you said earlier, to allow the grower to have the best product possible. You don't need straight organic seed. Yes, an organic product is clean, it's tastier, it smells better. It looks better sometimes, but that's all in the hands of the grower. Now, you can't like, you can't judge how a person's product is going to turn out by what products they're allowed to use. Now, I understand like you can outlaw Miracle Grow because stuff like that can give you cancer. Okay, Miracle Grow is made by the same company that made Agent Orange back in the day. So my company barely buys anything that is made by Hawthorne just because we know what they did back in the day and we stand against that because it has had dire effects on people and the environment in the past. So, you know, I just, I, as a business owner who is seeing the the industries thrive already as legally as they can, you know, because we're selling farming products. I think that, you know, when you put that restriction on people, you're going to kill a lot of business for people that are in this industry of selling products to grow with. And you're going to get a lot of farmers coming out with methods they don't understand. And they're producing, you know, products that are not good, you know? I mean, you want, you want bag appeal when you're selling cannabis in a retail store. That's one thing that sells the product because you can't, nowadays, you can't open it, you can't smell it, you can't look at it. Before, when it was just a medical thing, I was back in California and I had, that's where I got involved in this industry is I was working with people there. And we used to sell to, you know, medical dispensaries. And I mean, if your stuff did not look good, smell good, you know, if it didn't have a good presence on the shelf, it didn't sell. You know, they wouldn't buy it off of you. And that was a competition that you had to compete with. So if you're telling people they can't use what's been formulated for the industry, then I mean, you're basically limiting them on how successful they can be and how much they can it's kind of hard to explain it because, you know, there's such a there's such a push towards organic practices now.
Sure.
But it gets mixed up in how they create the product is what I'm saying.
Thank you sir. I mean, and just to be clear, the rules are not organic, they are naturally derived products.
Okay, so I mean, if, so if we were to sell like these products that I just showed you guys, I mean, these are all organically derived.
They would be fine.
Aim for. So how would we, like, what would we need to provide to the commercial grower to pass that regulation?
There is a list of substances that are prohibited.
I understand that, but like say, like they order a full line of nutrients from us, right? And they spend like, like the other gentleman said, a couple thousand dollars on the nutrient line. How do we certify that it's in compliance with the regulations before it gets in their hands? You know what I mean? How do we, how are we okay to sell that product to the customer without them coming back and saying, hey, this doesn't qualify for what I can use? You know what I'm saying? And I've looked at all the restricted substances you cannot use, but who is the person that's going to be overlooked in that is my question? And how do we jump over that hurdle before it becomes a problem for these people? Because, okay, I see the fees being very high. They're asking this before plants are even in the ground. So you either got to have a boatload of cash, a really solid investor from off island that trusts you that, that, you know, I mean, this is a brand new thing in Guam. So anybody who's, who's working with anybody out here, they're judging it off of an experience somewhere else. How do you know that in the first year, everybody's going to make that 166 million whatever in revenue that was projected? I saw in the newspaper earlier. You know what I mean? These people are going to be paying debts and fees out their butt unless they got a big backing from a corporate company that's going to come in and take over all those fees. But then even at that, how are they going to transfer that money when you can't right now? Because it's from cannabis sales in the States. You know what I'm saying? So I just, I want to make sure that we're able to supply people with stuff the quickest way we can without any roadblocks. So I want to know who I got to go see to get all my products certified that I'm selling so that my customers don't have any issues when they're trying to put plants in the ground and get this thing going to make back the money they forked out.
Okay, thank you Mr. Camacho for your comments. I think that before I turn it to Director Ariel, I heard you mention something about getting your products cleared through customs and a concern that they're not going to, that the products that you're already bringing in are not, no longer going to be allowed for sale. Is that what your concern is?
Well, my concern is people will buy the product. Somebody will come in from agriculture, start looking through their stuff and say, hey, you're not in compliance, you can't use this. And then they'll come back to me and say, hey, why can't I use this? This is something that's formulated for the industry. And I'll say, I have no clue. You know what I mean? Because we're in an understanding that we're allowed to bring these products in because we've never had any issues and they are products that are formulated for the industry. We aren't selling Miracle Grow. You get what I'm saying? To grow cannabis because it's not good for people. And I see people at Home Depot buying it all the time. So you already have half the island's population smoking cannabis, they're growing with stuff they're buying from Home Depot, Guam Home Center, these guys that are bringing stuff in from China. And it's just, you don't know what's going into the product, you know? So how can we get our products certified? Like I said, because they are already industry-leading products for Guam.
Are you?
We want the people here to have the same access as the people in California, the people in Washington, the people in Florida to these products, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I don't want it to be.
Yeah, first of all, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name and I just caught.
Joshua Camacho.
Joshua?
Joshua Camacho, yes.
And your business is 671?
671 Growth Supply. So we're an online-based business. And what I do is I deliver to the customer, especially, you know, the pandemic.
So I have a question. So you're an existing business supplier of these types of products. So you're currently in business and currently you have growers purchasing your products.
Not just growers, I mean, you have micro green growers, you have other farmers coming to us for soil because the farmer stores are sold out, you know, so it's farmers, it's just.
Farmers in general, farmers in general. In other words, you're, you're a businessman who's selling your products. And it sounds like you're almost would be correct to say that you almost want to have an approved seal kind of.
No, I want to make sure that the products we're selling are in compliance with what you guys are putting forth.
Right, so.
Because if we're, if we're bringing in a product that is not, if we're bringing in a product that's not.
You're currently bringing the product already, correct?
Yes, but it's not, there's no regulation to the industry yet. You get what I'm saying? So people can, like I said, people can go buy Miracle Grow at Home Depot, pump their cannabis full of it, sell it to somebody or gift it to somebody.
I understand.
I don't know how it's going on, but they're poisoning people, right? And that's where the restrictions should be, not, not on the industry-leading products that are already developed.
Right. So I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. So are you, what are you recommending some sort of a sale of approval? I'm trying to get what.
My question is, do I have to go to EPA? Do I have to get the products tested? Do I have to, you know what I mean? How are, how is agriculture or the regulating agency going to decide who's in compliance when they're using these products? Because, because.
No, I under, I understand, but what is your, is your recommendation to have some kind of clearance for your product?
Well, I just, I want to make sure that my customers and everybody's customers, ERC, you know, Guam Home Center, Benson, they all sell farming equipment, okay? I want to make sure that everybody in our industry is safe right now and not going to lose business because we have this regulation being dropped on us when it's already been, I mean, we did our research, we opened these companies, we go to these vendors because they offer products that are offered in the industry in the States. Guam's part of the United States, so we. Guam's part of the United States, so we, as business owners, follow those rules. But when you're setting a new regulation on what farmers can use to grow a product, which is unheard of in my, like, I, I never heard, like, i- if you're growing tomatoes or cucumbers, I mean, I bet you, I've seen these Chinese farmers going to Home Depot and buying Miracle Grow. They're selling them in the local market. Where does the testing come in for that?
I understand, Mr. Camacho.
Why are you putting the regulation on cannabis like that?
I understand, Mr. Camacho, but if you, if you would give me a minute, I, I'm trying to help you out here. I, 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 I'm hearing what you're saying. We don't want you to go out of business.
I don't know, I don't know what to recommend because I don't know how the government process works.
So Madam Chair.
If agriculture needs to look over it, or if EPA needs to look over it, then that would be the process that I would say to.
Madam Chair, I, 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 I would, I would conclude, number one, that we don't, of course, we don't want to have existing suppliers of farm, of, of growers. It, it's not just marijuana growers, it's other growers uh, who like this gentleman, Mr. Camacho, who has obviously a business, who's, and he, and, um, I, I, I would conclude that he's seeking for some kind of, you know, and I've seen this before, some kind of, uh, recommended seal of approval of use or only approved kind of thing. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Camacho, and, um, that's something that the board is going to have to discuss.
Another reason why I ask, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is because I need to work with my suppliers to find the products for Guam if that's the case. You know, and, and we want to bring those products in for the people.
Furthermore, because we don't want to, we also don't want, the purpose of opening this industry is not to close other small business work already suppliers of farmers. So your, your testimony is well taken and that's something that we really need to consider.
So if I can add one more thing, I, I also, i- if I can add one more thing, I also, um, support what the, the, the three previous speakers have, have, um, stated with an integrated market. Um, quality control is the biggest thing here. You have to understand that if, if you're producing a product and you're held liable for that product, you don't want anybody else touching it in that process from when it gets from you to the store. It doesn't mean we have to skip any process. We can still get it tested. We can still do all that, but if I owned a farm and, and invested that much money into it, I wouldn't want to put the packaging into somebody else's hands because what if they have a contamination in their facility? And that gets into your packaging of your product. And then when it hits the retail shelf, somebody opens it up and finds that either mold or, um, bugs or, or, or something that spilled in there, you know, and it wasn't supposed to be in there. Because they're not doing their hundred percent like you would if it was your own company and your brand. Um, I think that people deserve the right to control their own brand and how they're portrayed on the retail shelf.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, it's not monopolizing anything. It's, it's just, it's literally quality control. I mean, in this industry, you should see all the reviews of the big stores out there. You get a lot of bad reviews of bad products. Because there's no quality control in some of the brands that they purchase. So, you know, and that's because it's outsourced a lot. So that's just my two cents. Um, thank you for hearing my testimony. I know there's a lot of other people, but, uh, if, if somebody can reach out to me, uh, I can provide my email later to the, to the email just on how we can get our products.
You can also print your comments via a, an email to the board. Uh, as you, as you know, um, there, there's other people that would like to speak. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Okay, I have Ms. Um, uh, Tulsa Munia Brett next, um, for oral testimony.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I guess I just wanted to say a few things. I'll try to keep this short. First, I would contend that there are several investors locally willing to engage in business and it's not, we, our, our community doesn't have to resign themselves to finding off-island investors. Um, there are several who are interested and capable of investing. Um, second, in agriculture, or sorry, first, my name is Tulsa Munia Brett. I'm a private individual testifying in my private capacity as a concerned citizen. Um, I know of many farmers, national, or locally and stateside who are growing cannabis who use one hundred percent naturally derived fertilizers and pesticides. I think it's the word pesticides probably, that's also kind of disillusioning because then it makes you think of a synthetic chemical. Um, and those who grow cannabis, um, from what I've seen in the studies that I've done, um, the market has completely shifted for growers where they use, the best growers who produce the highest quality products use naturally derived products. And I believe in the rules and regulations that are draft for them, I've read so far, it states naturally derived products. I don't think it says organic in there, which is, yes, a very misleading term because it makes people think it's natural products, but it's not, um, technically derived. They just had an approved EPA certification to say that they're organic. And I don't think, um, the previous speaker would have to necessarily lose business or, um, the people who are already buying his products can continue buying them and using them to grow the cannabis that they want to grow privately. But I think the purpose and intent for the rules and regulations listing is to address those who want to grow or commercially. So then if they're doing that, they have to comply with what's listed. But that wouldn't take away from anyone who's buying from him now because those are all people buying in a non-commercial industry. So they're going for themselves. And although Miracle Grow and products like that are highly regulated, they're still available out there and people are still growing with them. And those would be products that were not allowed to be sold commercially, from what I understand. Um, and farmers are regulated right now with the fertilizers and pesticides that they use. EPA regulates them. Other regulatory agencies such as the Department of Agriculture goes out and does inspections to find out when they're using these products, when they stop using them. Um, and that's on the fruit, fruits and vegetables that we eat now because you can only use them up to a certain point and then have to allow the vegetables to flush them out naturally. So that already exists. It's not something new that this board or commission is imposing on people. Um, and just because products were formulated for use in a certain industry like agriculture doesn't mean that they're necessarily good for you or good for anybody anyway. I mean, look, Agent Orange was approved and regulated and we found out that wasn't good for us as was Miracle Grow, or not necessarily Miracle Grow, but, um, what is that? The Monsanto stuff. Um, those are all approved industry wide and then we realized that they're really harmful for us. And I think that was the intent of what I'm reading now, is to prevent that happening within this new industry for the island. Um, and I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tulsa. Any members of the board have questions or comments for Tulsa? Uh, thank you very much for that perspective and those comments. Um, if anyone else want to provide oral testimony, um, who has not testified yet tonight, we still have about thirty minutes, so we can give the floor to two more on people tonight and before we adjourn, but we will continue tomorrow evening at five thirty. If you would like to testify, um, you can identify yourself in the chat or right now, if you turn your mic on and go ahead and state your full name for the record and the entity you represent, we can hear you now. Is there anyone else who has not testified yet who would like to testify at this point? Um, I did see the comment that Mr. Devon Suzuki wanted to provide additional comment. Um, before I, um, turn back to Mr. Suzuki, I saw, I, I believe it was APEC Grow Company has joined us today and I saw that they had submitted written testimony as well. Um, so APEC Grow Company, if you wanted to present oral testimony, either to supplement your written testimony or read it in the record, you're welcome to. Okay, I see a message, not tonight, maybe tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, um, I don't see anyone else who has identified Mr. Suzuki. You, you only had, gave us a few minutes earlier, so um, we welcome additional comment, um, from you now. Don't forget to turn your mic off.
Oh, sorry, guys. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to kind of like set a tone in the sense of, uh, what I do in, uh, speaking to people about cannabis. Uh, two thousand nineteen was a very weird year for California's cannabis. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, we changed the laws completely in California. So anyone here who adopted the laws, you're adopting two thousand nineteen's laws. So this is the new lab test. It's a new set and it got a lot harder, you know, so. I want to first and foremost say like Josh, you're absolutely right. Like, uh, Josh's products, uh, first, uh, as long as I'd say it has O M N, uh, O M N I, uh, the seal, then it's good. Because that, that just means it's organic. It means it's naturally derived. So you essentially don't want to manipulate the plant in a way that is not organic anymore. So products that are not naturally derived, if you introduce them too much to the plant, they become like a steroided monster. You know, and steroids are normal. We produce steroids, but if you do that in an uncontrolled amount, plant's going to start doing some funny things. And the difference between eating a tomato and burning a Jack Herrera Sativa is that you're setting it to a decarboxylated level that changes it chemically. And when you're introducing plant structure chemicals to it, fertilizer, fertilizer included, like guys, we don't want to be the green industry that destroys Guam just because we want to smoke fire weed, you know? And I feel you because in California, that's what happened. You know, that's what happened. What do you, why do you think the marijuana farms in California are the ones that stay on fire? They're the ones that burn because the fertilizer there gets set on fire, you know? So it's a very good agricultural concern. And as long as like products like Josh has, like his pesticide, I use that all day, every day. Even at my dad's farm, I tell him I'm doing chores and I'm just using that on his tomatoes and peppers. But absolutely, we got to be careful if they don't have that O M N I seal, Omni. It's like a tongue twister for me. It, uh, you know, that's the organic seal that if the ingredients say you can introduce it every day, you can introduce it every week, you're probably okay. But anything that's, doesn't have that seal, you know, you're, you're kind of playing with something that's a little too, a little too chemical, you know, you might need to have a little more of a certificate for it. And I'm not saying that we need to go get that, but Josh, like, what he has is, you know, he's got a good point, what he has is good. But in, in the wide sense, like O M N I, that's the seal that our standards are listed at. So I just wanted to say that, yeah. We were kind of trying to look for that one seal.
Uh, Devin, uh, thank you for that because I was trying to get that out, like some kind of sort of approval.
I'm sorry, when I was reading the laws, I looked at it and I have the copy with me right here and I wrote it all out like on my little notebook and I was like, oh wait, this is just O M N I, like sticker.
Is it, is it O M N I or O M R I as suggested by David Cruz on the chat?
Oh my goodness, David, you are right. Thank you. David Cruz is right. David's right, yes. O M, O M.
So, so maybe, maybe in, um, I'm not sure, between David or you, Devin, I would love to just get written explanation on what that is, what O M R I is. You don't need to go into it tonight, but if you could provide it, if you can provide it in your written testimony, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and Josh has products that meet that already. And it is a very, very hard and, and stressful journey to find products that meet that. You know, because you introduce it to your plant as a grower and then one day they start looking like the Hulk and that, that's a carcinogen. So, you know, that's why California in two thousand nineteen, we had to change the game. Like, I unfortunately had a lot of coworkers who I didn't, I didn't work with anymore. Because, you know, we were accidentally, you know, I was accidentally making a dirty product. I was accidentally growing cannabis that, you know, was in theory dangerous. So we don't want to do that here. Yeah, uh, and thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Devin. Uh, and thank you for adding that and clarifying that for us. Um, that's well taken. Any other members have questions or comments to follow up on, on Mr. Suzuki's comments? No? Okay, um, is there anyone else? I, I hope I didn't miss anyone. Is there anyone else who would like to present oral testimony tonight? We have a little under thirty minutes before we adjourn.
Or we can adjourn early.
Unfortunately, I don't think we can. Because I noticed it until seven thirty, in case someone wants.
I like that, Teresa, I like that.
Um, so I think a- at the very least, uh, me or Chief and Craig will hang back until seven thirty, um.
I'm hanging.
Chief Ignacio, is there anybody in the room with you?
Crystal Paco, Craig, Sergeant Ken Castro, I don't know if he's gonna, I don't think he's gonna testify though. So, I'm not sure. Uh, and then the two other staff from DRT.
Well, um, Madam Chair, um, until we hear of a, of another public interest, um, i- if that's the case, and I'm going to, uh, I'm going to go dark, if you will. Um, but I will be on audio and as soon as somebody talks, I'll jump back on.
Yeah, so why don't we go ahead and do that? Um, we'll do a, you can go ahead and.
Almost like a break, break with ears on.
Right.
Break with ears on.
Well, well, uh, recess, I will stand by, Chief and I will stand by for any, um, participants that join or decide they want to present oral testimony. If you do, um, if anyone shows up to Adalute, they will notify us here on Zoom. Um, and if anyone shows up on Zoom with D, our team from DRT is monitoring the chat and the waiting room. Uh, and if so, we'll alert the board members and we can turn our cameras back on and our mics back on. But we'll recess until then. Thank you. I'm sorry, when I was reading the laws, I looked at it and I have the copy with me right here and I wrote it all out like on my little notebook and I was like,
oh wait, this is just OMNI like sticker.
Is it, is it OMNI or OMRI as suggested by David Cruz on the chat?
Oh, my goodness, David, you are right. Thank you. David Cruz is right. David's right, yes.
So, so maybe, maybe in, I'm not sure, between David or you, Devin, I would love to just get written explanation on what that is, what OMRI is. You don't need to go into it tonight, but if you could provide it, if you can provide it in your written testimony, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And Josh has products that meet that already. And it is a very, very hard and stressful journey to find products that meet that. You know, because you introduce it to your plant as a grower and then one day they start looking like the Hulk and that that's a carcinogen. So, you know, that's why California in 2019, we had to change the game. Like I unfortunately had a lot of coworkers who I didn't, I didn't work with anymore. Because, you know, we were accidentally, you know, I was accidentally making a dirty product. I was accidentally growing cannabis that, you know, was in theory dangerous. So we don't want to do that here. And thank you, that's all.
At same place here on Zoom, same, same login. Also at the governor's conference room. If you would like to sign up, you'd email that same email and we are accommodating people to testify in person as well. With keeping the COVID safety restrictions in mind, we have limited attendance and we have our hardworking team from Rev and Tax who are fielding and testing everyone before they go in with thermometers, not actual COVID tests. And we will continue Saturday morning at nine to five. And lastly, thank you again to all of the board members for committing your evenings and your weekend to this. I really appreciate it. And Craig and Gerard too, thank you for, for, for doing that for us as well. I know that, you know, you have long days and the evening, but I appreciate everyone's attention and really engaging with our, with our members of the public. If there's, does anyone else from the board want to make any comments before we? Us for the evening? Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure if the news is still on here, but I really do encourage the public to, to please engage with us. We, I know that there has been sentiments that, you know, the board came up with their rules. We're not going to change our mind, but that is, I can assure for myself and I'm sure my fellow board members, and that is quite to the contrary. We are very open. We are looking forward into engaging with you because I think at the end of the day, we all want a successful new industry on Guam. And so please speak your mind. We are here to listen and we do take your comments into consideration. After the three days, our meeting still won't be adjourned. We'll, we'll have another time to continue this meeting in which the board will discuss the very comments that all of you have brought up and in which we will probably entertain ways in which we think that we can make these rules better. So please come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Yes, I think we all echo that. I see a lot of nodding from the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, if I heard you correctly, the same Zoom link?
Yes.
For the next three days? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rev and Tax Compliance Branch for, for staffing the meeting. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I would just want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, thank you so much Director Ariola. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I want to say also thank you to our Rev and Tax team for always their support. They've been really great supporters of us, but also it's really nice to hear from our community. So I wanted to thank everybody from, from the public, whether they were representing their companies or, you know, representing themselves as individuals. This is the reason why that, you know, of course we have this opportunity and we've been working very hard to make sure that we can stand up this, this particular industry. So, you know, we welcome your comments and we thank you for that. So thanks again to everybody for attending.
I think I see Steve and Jerry, a couple of Heidi, a couple of media folks on. Appreciate the media being on and appreciate all that you can do to remind the folks that there is public hearing that will continue tomorrow and Saturday. So thank you, media partners.
Thank you, Director Shimizu, Director Ariola. Well, we are right at 7:30. If there are no further comments, I'll go ahead and adjourn just for the evening and we will pick back up tomorrow. Same, same time, same place, 5:30.